Okay, thank you for coming so much and thank you for coming to take part in the School Board Candidate Forum tonight. My name is Katherine, I'll be your MAPS volunteer moderator. And this is Claire, she will be our timekeeper for the evening. A couple of things to note and then we'll get started right away. And as people come in, if you need help finding a seat, there's still some available throughout the room or there's extra chairs on that end of the room. So a big thank you to the candidates, Nick Baker, Steve Mayer, Mike Davis, Caleb Arons, Dylan McGuire, Nicole Josephs. Thank you so much for coming and providing us with an opportunity to know you better. Uh, thanks to the MAPS volunteers that are helping out tonight at both of the doors and here at the camera. And thanks to Monroe Art Center for allowing us to use this space. So as an FYI to the building bathrooms, there's one accessible bathroom in this room right before you get to that door. There are multiple bathrooms in Red Hall, if you go down the steps, take a left into that hall, there's a sign right there that says bathrooms. Multiple bathrooms there, exits are here, here, and the east side of the building, okay? So then you're familiar with where we are. Your agenda that you picked up at the front will include everything that you need to know about how the forum will be run tonight. But in summary, we have two-minute introductions for each candidate. Then prepared questions that were given to each candidate ahead of time, followed by your written questions. Drawn at random and read by me, the forum wraps at 8:00 PM sharp, that's how long we have the room for. Important during the meeting, if a question comes to mind, write it down. Um, one question per card, but you can add as many questions as you'd like to the bowl. Uh, raise your card in the air and one of the wonderful volunteers will come and pick it up and add it to the bowl. They can also bring you another card if you have a new question you haven't thought of when you came in, alright? And if there's any more that are completed right now, we can collect them right now, just raise it up in the air and we'll grab it. There are chairs, there should be some extras over here, otherwise there's one up front here if you'd like. Okay, more coming. And lastly, our aim is to have a productive evening. So with that goal in mind, we respectfully ask that you hold all your applause until the end of the forum. We need a level of decorum that allows for information to be both received and delivered in a manner that everyone can hear. And bonus, we get good audio for our recording tonight, which will hopefully go up on YouTube following this meeting in the coming days. Thank you for understanding and working together with us on this. So let's get started with candidate introductions. So when they arrived, they drew for the place of introductions and who would start first. The order of who responds first will rotate with every question. And each candidate gets two minutes for their introduction. Nick, you drew the ace again, so you will go first.
Alright.
So Claire, once she's ready.
Alright, you're ready? Alright, my name is Nick Baker, uh, some of you who were at the last candidate's forum might remember me. Uh, one of the reasons why I'm running for school board is because I don't back down easy. I've, I've seen other board meetings and I've seen some of the things that have happened and I've had conversations with people. And I've witnessed things that aren't couth. And I'm not one of those people that will be cowling to doing something that others think you should do to toe the line. I don't believe that the new school should have been built where it is, but now that we've taken that step, we're, we're, we're gonna have to go through it. Are we gonna get this school originally that we had these first forums about? I hope so. I've watched a few meetings and I've known, and I've heard that things have gotten scaled back as prices have increased. And that's one of the things that I didn't agree with in construction. If I'd been a job when I was doing flooring, I knew exactly what the customer wanted before the job started. And they knew what to expect from me and I knew what to expect from them. Occasionally, there's a change order here and there and that's where contractors make their most money. Uh, so every change order we put in is another reason that the price is gonna go up and the quality is gonna go down. And when they say builder's grade, that, that's not the top of the line. That's just barely enough to keep the carpet fuzzy on your feet and the floors sticking down and the paint for the last five, 10 years, the fixtures. You know, a lot of people will fall into that, oh, it's builder's grade, it'll be good. My wife doesn't think I should run for school board because she thinks there's a bunch of bullies out there. And, and I'm not, I'm not afraid of them. There's, there's not a lot that I haven't seen in my forty-five years in life. I joined the army at seventeen, was deployed when I was, oh, sorry, that's my, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. So Steve, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank MAPS for doing this. I think it's a neat way to get all the candidates introduced to the community. Um, so I appreciate all the work you guys did. Uh, my name is Steve Mayer, I've lived here in Monroe most of my life. I'm retired after forty-five years in logistics business. I, as well as my wife and three adult children, received our primary education and all graduated in MHS with honors. I love this community and I'm very concerned with some of the past decisions that have been made within the district. I feel my family has received an excellent education in Monroe School District. Running for school board has never been on my bucket list. I realize what a time commitment this position entails and am grateful for all the community members that currently serve on the board that have full-time jobs and families. Being retired, I know I have more time than some to dedicate to a board. I'm concerned about the current division in the community over board, past board decisions. I don't feel we as a community can move forward until we chair this division. After talking to members of the community that share my same concerns, I asked myself, do I want to be a part of the problem or part of the solution? Since I had, was asked by several members of the community to run, I decided to throw my hat in the ring. I don't believe this school district is broken. We have wonderful teachers and we have amazing students. I do believe there have been some mistakes made in the past that need to be rectified. And I believe they can be and want to do my part in making this happen. We all hear a lot about the need for accountability and transparency. Both of these are very important for community sentiment and I feel the district has to do a better job in both.
Thank you, Steve. Mike, you're up next.
Okay, again, I would also, as Steve did, I'd like to thank Claire, Katherine, and Karen especially for getting this forum organized. As Katherine mentioned, my name is Mike Davis. Uh, my family moved to Monroe in nineteen eighty-four. My wife, Mary, is a retired teacher after teaching here in Monroe for twenty-two years. Uh, we have four children, Brian, Brett, Rob, and Megan, all who graduated from Monroe. And we presently have two grandchildren that are attending the school district. Uh, I am currently retired, forty-four years of employment with Wisconsin Power and Light and Alliant Energy. I started my career in the line of apprenticeship program out of Fond du Lac and from there worked for the next forty-four years, retiring as a senior manager of engineering and maintenance. Uh, before moving to Monroe, uh, I was elected and served as vice president of the school board in Amro, Wisconsin. So I do know what it takes to be on the school board, I know what it means and the time it's going to take. Uh, since moving to Monroe, I've been involved in several civic organizations. Uh, been the past president and vice president of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, uh, and likewise president, vice president with Monroe Kiwanis. Been in, on the board of directors for the YMCA, past president of the Monroe Booster Club, uh, have done mock interviews with the high school juniors and seniors that are gonna be graduating. And we do have some of those coming up this coming Wednesday, so it's gonna be extremely exciting to see this group. Uh, I've also assisted with the construction of several of the musicals that they have. Uh, I'm a past member of the Green County Emergency Management System. And, uh, today I'm a very active member in the Friends of Kedaz Recreational Park and for the local prairie enthusiasts. Now, a little later tonight during the forum, you're going to hear what my top priorities are. And if you have any questions and we can't get those answered, I encourage you all to see me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb, you're up.
Uh, good evening, thank you all for coming, thank you to MAPS for organizing this. I think this is a great opportunity to, as a candidate and also as a taxpayer, to hear different candidates' opinions. Uh, my name is Caleb Arons, uh, I am thirty-two years old, I graduated from Monroe in two thousand eleven after high school. Uh, so backing up a little bit, I was, I, my first time in Monroe was in eighth grade when I had school choice to Monroe because I saw that there was more opportunities in Monroe than other surrounding school districts. After that, I went to University of Wisconsin-Plattville, received a degree in ag business and a minor in engineering and technologies. Uh, from there, my wife and I purchased a place south of Monroe in Clarnell Township. Uh, today I'm a part of, I'm the president of the Green County Beef Producers. I'm also on the board of directors for our state breed association for livestock that we're part of, that I'm a part of. Um, I feel like I wanted to run for president, or for school board because of the extra opportunities I think the Monroe has. They've got great teachers, great staff, great administration, and I think we just need to continue to keep moving forward, um, but still keep learning from the past that we did. Uh, again, thank you all for coming, I appreciate you taking time out of your Monday night to come see us, thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Dylan, you are next.
Okay, uh, my name's Dylan McGuire, I am currently on the board of education. And towards the end of my second term, I was elected initially in twenty nineteen. Uh, I grew up in Monroe, went to school here middleweight, graduated in twenty-ten. And then went to UW-Whitewater to get a degree in economics. And I moved back after college and have been working here at Colony Brands ever since. I'm currently a senior business analyst in the analytics department. My reason for continuing to keep running for school board is I want to continue our impressive growth and achievement for our students. When I was up for reelection in twenty-twenty-two, a big topic was a school report card. And this past year, we are in the top ten in the state in multiple different growth and test score ranks. And I think that's a huge achievement that we've accomplished. That was a big deal for the community when I was running for reelection and I hope that continues. So, thanks for everyone being here and taking time to listen to us.
Thank you, Dylan. And Nicole, you're up next.
Hi, everyone, I'm Nicole Josephs, I was born and raised here in Monroe. I'm a proud MHS graduate of the class of two thousand. I hold an associate's degree in respiratory therapy and a bachelor's degree in healthcare management. My husband, Andrew, is an optometrist and together we opened our own office Statewide Vision Center ten years ago here in town. Um, while working at the office, I also work at SSM Health at the hospital. I'm a respiratory therapist and have been there for ten years as well. We have two children, Madeline is a junior and Nate is a freshman. Um, I love to participate in the community. I've been on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors since two thou, or twenty-twenty. I currently serve as the secretary, secretary of the Booster Club. I coordinate the fall and spring session concession stands for Booster Club. And new this year is a role of co-chair for the twenty-twenty-five post-prom committee. I also have served as co-coordinator for the fundraising committee for the eighth grade Washington DC field trip for three years. And I assisted with Say Yes campaigns for Northside Updates and recently the New High School and Abe Updates. Um, I believe that the board of education sets the tone for student excellence. And I want every community member, parent, and student to feel a sense of pride and commitment to the school district like I do.
Thank you very much for the introductions. So on to the prepared questions that were provided to the candidates prior to the meeting, they're listed in your agenda. Um, they each have one minute to respond and Steve will start with this one. So, question number one, how can the district best prepare students for success in school and life? And what Claire has said, you know?
I believe the district needs to lead by example. This begins by requiring all adults in the district to make good choices and become role models for the students. I believe the district is obligated to provide all the tools in a safe, healthy environment conducive to learning for all the students by the best staff available. Making sure all the students become proficient in reading, writing, and arithmetic at graduation. Encouraging them to excel and assisting them through their shortcomings. Giving everyone to realize failing is not as negative as learn, sometimes you have to fail in order to learn. Um, teaching them to problem solve and work, uh, respectively with others. No one person has all the answers, but together, pretty much every task can be accomplished. Help students discover the many options that are available for their futures. Stressing to students that they need to have a goal to strive for and never give up on their dreams.
Thank you. So Mike, you're next, do you need me to repeat the question?
Nope.
Alright.
Should be all set. Uh, to better prepare our students for the school and life, I think that we really need to provide, along with the standard classroom teachings that we have always done, we need opportunities for them to excel in the areas that they are interested in. Uh, the career communications course and the launch program that have just recently been introduced are just some great examples that already exist in our curriculum. But what we need to do is to continue and to expand those programs. In fact, I encourage all of you, if you have not heard about it or seen it, uh, they have a presentation this week, Friday I believe it is, at the high school for the launch program, where the students will make their presentations. But I think we also need to do a little better communication with the students and then include all of the families, encouraging them for their active participation in the educational process. I also think we need to do more collaborating with the local businesses, with the organizations, and the governmental agencies to create a curriculum that better fits the students' needs.
Caleb, you are next.
So I'm gonna kind of break this down into two different categories, your school and life. So during the past month, I've spent, uh, I've toured every single school in the Monroe School District. Uh, all three elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, I've met with the principals, the vice principals. Um, and I feel like in order of breaking this down into school, uh, it starts at the elementary school. So that includes our teacher interventionists. I know that those were listed as the tier-three cuts, uh, potentially, I do not agree with that. I think tier, by those interventionists, we, without having those interventions, we can't pull off the tier-two, tier-three type of students. So I think it starts there and then it moves into, when you get to high school, preparing them for life. Monroe has transitioned to an evidence-based grading scale. So those of you not, maybe as familiar with it, evidence-based grading is less counting points and less, uh, playing school and memorizing, where it's more of relating life skills back to the academic parts of the material. And so with that, students, overachieving students can move faster, underachieving students can kind of slow down and go at their own pace and still have the chance to, uh, keep moving forward.
Thank you, Caleb. And Dylan, you're up next.
Thanks. Um, I think the main thing that we can do to best prepare our students is a diverse offering of courses and experiences. I think Mike brought up the launch program, which is an awesome program, we're up to five different strands, including the building trades, which you can physically see what the students are doing and it's pretty amazing. And then we have media analytics and two healthcare items as well, so people can experience things that in past generations were not possible for high school students. Um, beyond that, more culture things, uh, social emotional learning. Life isn't all about memorizing things and taking tests, you need to be able to work with people, develop interpersonal skills and self-awareness and how to deal with different situations. And then, uh, growth mindset, students need to see challenges as opportunities to grow rather than a way to get down on themselves if they're struggling with something.
And Nicole?
I want the best education possible for the next generation. I feel that we've got a great solid foundation in the district and I want to go ahead and build on that. I want to focus on making certain that all Monroe students have access to a proper learning environment. That means we need to ensure their student safety, modern programming, facilities, opportunities for knowledge expansion, and recognizing that every child has a unique set of skills and no two learn exactly the same. I want every student to feel valued and respected, inspired, and supported so that they can reach their full potential.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, and Nick?
So, students are, you know, the reason why we have schools, but without the teachers, the students get nowhere. Having the best teachers that we can afford and we can properly fund and we can support is what, if we give the teachers the skills that they need and the freedom to do the teaching that they need to do, they'll reach out to those students and encourage them. You know, my own children have had teachers that they go to with problems that aren't school-related and that's an important thing that teachers do. And teachers don't get paid for that, you know? If a teacher did just what we pay them for, the classrooms would be empty, there wouldn't be anything up there. A lot of our teachers do it because they love it. And the more support we give the teachers, the better our students are gonna do and, you know, giving them every opportunity we can, both physically and mentally, having a safe environment to do their education.
Thank you very much. So the next question and the last of the prepared questions, Mike, you'll be first to respond for this one. In light of the district's budget shortfalls, what are your top three funding priorities and why? And what are your bottom three funding priorities and why?
Okay, my top three priorities are school safety, student achievement, and ensuring opportunities for all students. Now for safety, I feel that every single student deserves and should expect to have a safe environment in which they can attend, they can study, they can learn, and they can grow. For student achievement, we must make sure that everyone has a chance to reach their full potential. We need to prepare them for the life and careers beyond high school, similar to what we had talked about a little bit earlier. Ensuring opportunities for all, we need to be looking at three main things, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we need to be sure that every student, regardless of their abilities, has the opportunity for getting a good quality education. For my bottom three priorities, just real quick so I can make it, those would basically be the things that do not totally connect with my top three. And I want to make sure that they do not directly affect the students.
Alright. Caleb?
So my top three funding priorities are gonna be teachers and support staff. Without them, we can't, we limit the amount of courses that we can be offered. Uh, right now Abe shares a lot of staff with both middle school and other buildings. Number two would be 4K kindergarten, I would like to see Monroe eventually transition to all-day 4K kindergarten because I feel like that will help solve some transportation costs on the lower priority. I would also like to see the high school launch program, the career exploration program, and the soar program continue to grow and achieve. I know there's a few things in the works that sound great, um, as far as working with local manufacturers, continue those programs going. My lower three priorities are bus transportation, by not having busing students during the day, we can eliminate some costs there. Outdoor, groundskeeping, Monroe City does a great job maintaining our parks. Can we contract a party like the Monroe City or a third party to help maintain, uh, the grounds? Because we're dealing with a bigger area than what we have now. And my third priority would be technology, but, um, we have Chromebooks, we buy them over two years. Can we look at leasing them or renting them versus purchasing them?
Okay. And Dylan?
Uh, my three priorities are, uh, staff retention and, uh, also the second one I have is student mental health services. We have a robust school-based mental health and I believe we have the first in the state of the level that we have right now and I want to maintain that. Um, and the next one would be curriculum related, we need to keep, make sure we have modern curriculum and that is always up to date so that we can be teaching our students as best as we can. Um, for lower priority items, I don't think our district is having anything that is a low priority in my opinion. So I'm just gonna flip this to something that the district shouldn't be spending on. Act twenty, there was money allocated to a new program that has mandated professional development. Those funds have never been released, so the district is on the hook for that. Um, special education funding, it's only reimbursed around thirty percent, it used to be up to sixty percent. That is some more funding that the district is losing essentially. And then vouchers, a hundred thousand dollars of our taxpayer money is being used to educate students elsewhere.
Thank you, Dylan. And Nicole?
Alright, so my top, uh, three priorities would be, first of all, ensuring that our students continue receiving quality education. Um, and making sure that we're working towards being a top-tier school in Wisconsin. The next would be exceptional education, which includes students requiring extra support. And also students that are capable of taking on extra challenges. That would also be opportunities for various types of learning such as classroom, work experience, technical skills, like the others have said, the launch and soar programs. And also supportive services of options for learning in primary languages and preferred learning styles. Also, mental health services and, um, preparation for after-graduation. Uh, bottom three priorities, uh, I agree, like Dylan said, nobody really wants to be taking anything away from our students. But I would say, um, reducing sports clubs and extra cost events because the community usually steps up to help fill that void.
Thank you. Nick?
I haven't, I'll be honest, I haven't read the school's budget in the last year. Honestly don't know what they're spending the majority of their money on. But, you know, we've been stuck with the, the school. But having, uh, taking care of our buildings for years, we didn't take care of our buildings. We had, you know, we let them all slide. You know, we let the high school slide, we let the Abe slide, we let Northside slide, until it got to the point where we had to dump lots of money into them. If we do routine maintenance, hey, it's easier to fix things. But, uh, there's nothing that we shouldn't not fund in our schools, you know? The biggest thing is administration. Honestly, I don't think we need every administrator that we probably have. I, I think, I saw congressmen the other day, we've gone from one to one or point-five administrators to one, to almost two and a half administrators to one teacher. And I think that's backwards.
And thank you, and Steve?
I personally don't feel this is something that I can answer at this time without knowing where the, where the money is going, kind of what Nick said. Of course, we need to make the cuts, that's apparent. I think we can all agree, we need to make them wherever we have the least amount of impact on our students' education. I feel good teachers are the district's most valuable resource, so retaining them should be the main priority. That said, the district has over three hundred paid employees, less than half of those employees are teachers. Um, I think that's somewhere we need to look and make sure that all those other positions are relevant. Um, I think the whole entire business model for the school district needs to be looked at. Um, are their current assets, are the current assets being maxed out? I don't know, I don't see the data, so I can't really say. But I think the cost of these items should be addressed first. Prior to letting sentimental feelings decide, we need to get the most out of our tax dollars.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, rest of the night is spent on your written questions. Woo! Okay. Basic rules, candidates, so this is important, candidates, you can choose to answer, you can choose to not answer a question. All candidates will have the opportunity to answer every question, even if a question is directed to one specific candidate. They have one minute to respond. I will not read cards with obscenities, other than that, I will read every card. If a question is drawn that's similar to a prior question, I will read it. The candidates will have the opportunity to expand on their last answer and get another minute with the topic. Or you can choose to pass if you feel it's been answered sufficiently already, okay? So we'll draw the first question and Caleb, you'll be the first to respond for this round, alright? Okay.
Well, I think, I think I know.
You answered the second prepared question.
You're right, you're right.
Thank you. Okay, first question. What are your views on how social studies and language arts are taught in our schools, specifically teaching about groups who are historically or currently marginalized or topics related to civil rights? I can ask it again, if you want. Anybody who needs to hear it again.
Can you say it again, please?
Yes, yep. What are your views on how social studies and language arts are taught in our schools, specifically teaching about groups who are historically or currently marginalized or topics related to civil rights?
I think that's not really, uh, as a school board, I, it's part of history. And if it's part of the social studies, we have to learn about it. We can't erase history, we have to learn from history, not make the same mistakes whether moving forward in history. I don't know if it's necessarily from a school board's perspective to... I don't know if it's necessarily for a school board's perspective to monitor what is, how it's being perceived, as long as it's the curriculum that's being presented. We can't erase history, so we have to just continue to educate ourselves on it.
Thank you. Caleb, so Dylan, you're next?
Yeah, I would agree with Caleb that that level of curriculum involvement is not the job of the school board. But I do think it's important for the curriculum to include those things. No reason to shy away from that. And if we have students that identify with that particular group, I think it's really important that we teach those items and they feel like they belong.
Alright, thank you. Dylan, Nicole?
I agree, just like Caleb and Dylan said. History needs to be taught, everything that has happened needs to be shared. Nothing needs to be taken away. And especially with the way things are in the world climate right now, there's a lot of things that need to be taught so that the kids know what has happened in the past and how to move forward in the future as they come up upon these different wars and things that are taking place now.
Thank you. Nicole? Nick?
My time in the military taught me a lot of things about learning that Monroe is not the center of the universe. When you get outside of Monroe, if you look around, we're usually a one, one, one-race kind of area. It's very Swiss. It was much Swissier when I moved up here. But getting out into the big world and seeing that not everybody lives in a house, a househouse. Not everybody lives in the same kind of conditions that you do. Not everybody grew up with food on the table. Not everybody grew up not being racially profiled. That stuff is very important. And the more that our kids learn about how the world works as a whole, the better off they'll be. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Steve?
I kind of agree with the other points of view. I mean, if it's part of our history, I think it needs to be taught in our history curriculum. It's, it's our past and kids need to be aware of all the aspects of it.
Thank you. And Mike?
Again, I'm gonna be like the rest, I pretty much agree, agreed. Being the last one answering is really great. I guess what I would look at is, I don't think that it is a true part of a decision that the school board should make. I think we pick the administration, they take care of the teachers, and they get the lessons. However, I think we need to monitor that. And as I mentioned, one of the big three things for me is diversity. And I think we have to have that. And if that means including it in the language arts, the social studies, the history, that needs to be included. The thing we have to do, though, is to make absolutely sure that it's accurate and that it is transmitted in the proper way. Today's world with social media, lord knows what we're gonna be reading. You know, you can't believe ninety percent of it. So, we need to be very careful when we come across on those types of things.
Alright, thank you. You're really good with the timer, everybody, this is going really well. Alright, second question. And Caleb, you'll be the first.
No, I didn't.
Dylan. Pass the test, okay? Dylan will be the first. Okay. Hang on a second, make sure I can read it. Okay, I think, there's one word I'm not sure about. Is Kim, is there a Kim Carey? In case I get a word wrong, Kim. Yes, okay, so if I get a word wrong, please correct me. Okay, thank you for signing this, that helps in that event. With the possible dissolution of the Federal Department of Education and possibly no, this is the word I'm not sure. Okay, increase, there we go, increased state aid. Yep, increased state aid, so let me start over. With the possible dissolution of the Federal Department of Education and possibly no increase in state aid to Wisconsin school districts, how do you propose to keep district programs? Thank you.
Alright, you got an easy one. The honest answer is you can't without that funding. The federal government doesn't fund a ton of school digit, school district budget items, but they do fund Title I positions to low-income schools, which we have some of. Without that funding, those positions couldn't exist. And in regards to the state budget, we've been falling further and further behind every single year. We always hope that doesn't happen. I'm not confident in this budget cycle. We just have to keep making smart cuts and budget decisions along the way and hope things change, but prepare for the worst.
Thank you. Dylan? Nicole?
It is a very scary situation. We know that we're already underfunded. We're not getting the support that we need, but we continue to get mandates of things that need to be provided for our, our students, but there's no reimbursement for that. So, to think about the fact that we would lose even more than what we already don't have is very scary. We're gonna need to really rally as a community to figure out how we could fill those gaps. It really is just gonna come down to community support. And it's, that's where it becomes scary, is the operating referendum had not been repassed. So, we're already down that amount, and we're gonna be down more again. So, there's a lot to make up and we need to figure out how the community's gonna support that.
Thank you, Nicole. Nick?
That's a good question. It's only a matter of time, I think, before the Department of Education is a subject of the Doge Group. Every day I worry about, I currently work at Little Housing Authority, and I keep waiting for the Housing and Urban Development to get their funding poll. But like you said, Nicole, this community does amazing things. If we lost all of our funding and had to rely on ourselves like a little intact colonial village, I think this community would actually rally. But they'd have to trust that the money was gonna be spent correctly. There's amazing people in this community that will do amazing things if they think that you're spending the money on worthy causes. You can go to a business and you can say, hey, we need some help. And they'll have a stack of requests this tall, and they'll sort through, and they'll pick the cause that they think is gonna be the best bang for their buck. Thank you.
Steve, one pleasure, and go ahead.
This is a tough question, and it's a lose-lose situation. The only hope that we could have, you know, if they do decide at the federal level to do away with the Department of Education, I mean, there's gotta be some extra money. There's a lot of money spent in that Department of Education right now. And I would hope that the federal government would subsidize the schools state by state a little bit more. When it comes to the state of Wisconsin, they keep saying that they're gonna keep increasing the funding, but as yet, we haven't seen, but yet they sit on a five-billion-dollar surplus. So, I mean, somebody needs to get off the pot and, you know, understand. I think, I think the state legislature is starting to realize. They're seeing the amount of referendums that are taking place in the state every year. And, you know, the failed ones like we had here, that can't, you can't keep running like that. So, I mean...
And Mike?
Okay, yeah, I would agree, as the other one said, is that if the budgeting from the federal and state government is cut, I mean, it's virtually impossible to run a school. I mean, you take, what, about thirty-seven million dollars that it costs to run the school district? You know, we need funding, it's been cut since, what, nineteen ninety-three? I think a lot of the budgets started coming through, that were reduced. But I think we need to get out, we need to vote for one thing. With the upcoming elections, I think it's going to be very critical on who gets elected in the, the director of the education, the, the state superintendent, I'm sorry. But I think we also need to talk to our representatives and try and get them to our meetings and get them involved in the schools so that they can actually see. I mean, yeah, they call, they talk, and they do this and hear everything on the radio, but until they actually come and get here, I think that's, that's something that we need to do. And then again, just, okay.
Thank you, Mike. I'll like it shared in a minute, believe it or not, this is good. And Caleb?
So, as a son of a, my mom was a school teacher for twenty-seven years. She was a reading specialist in Broadhead and in Jango. So, this is a very real topic that's discussed quite frequently in our house. Recently in January, I did meet with Senator Howard Barkline to discuss state funding and where the disconnect is. We had very different opinions. I'm not optimistic that anything's gonna be resolved in the short, near future. Without state funding and without state increases, you're gonna, you are going to see referendums continuing to keep coming up in every community. There's the extreme communities where it takes three times for referendums to pass. And that's unfortunate. But it is a real thing, it's going to happen. The state is sitting at four billion dollars worth of surplus. The argument that was given back to me when asked, what is the point of this money? Was, would you rather have one big bag of money handed to you at the end of, for one year, or an increase over several years? And everybody's gonna pick the increase over several years, right? However, if you're not doing either one, it's not really an argument.
Thank you. Alright, next question. Nicole, you'll be the first one for this. Okay, if Monroe residents continue to vote against school referendums, would you cut an academic area before a sport?
No. I did allude to it earlier, that I feel that the community does a great job. Obviously, I am secretary of booster club, so I know that we work with so many different people throughout the community to help support the sports. So, I do feel like cuts could be made within sports and clubs and then ask the community to step up. Taking the academics out is just completely against everything that you need to do as a school. So, we want to make sure that we're still providing the excellent education and take out the pieces that might be able to be supported by other means.
Thank you. Nicole? Nick?
You might not know this, but I was horrible at sports. In, in fact, sports in Monroe, when I was in high school, was kind of traumatizing. You laugh, but no. You, you shouldn't be singled out because you're not good enough to be on sports. And sports, when kids get off and beyond, unless you're gonna go pro, are gonna do absolutely no good. Team building, yes. But I would not hesitate at all to cut sports if it was between teachers and sports programs. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
I, I agree. I mean, education is, is what it's all about. I mean, before we cut any, any type of educating our children, we need to cut a sport. I mean, because for sports, I do believe there's enough other avenues that kids can join sports clubs and things like that. I mean, I hope, sports are very important in school, it's part of a, a builder, a confidence builder for kids. I mean, win or lose, I wasn't a star athlete either, but, you know, I mean, it is a very important part of a child's education. But when push comes to shove, the classroom comes first.
Okay, it's a great question and one of the tougher questions, I think, that the board will ever have to face if it does come down to that. Right now, there are eighty-five after-school programs that take part in Monroe School District. That includes the middle school and high school. Now, when they say, I wanna cut a sport, you just don't understand, that's not just a sport. I mean, you have theater, you have chorus, you have band, you have a numerous amount of after-school activities that are involved along with just sports. And I think sports gets singled out because it is such high-profile. I think it's excellent. My four kids that went through school got a great, excellent education, especially in the classroom. But if you were to talk to a couple of them right now, the way that they learned to speak to the public was through the extracurricular, through theater, of all things. You know, to be able to get up in front of a roomful of people and sing a solo or perform, it takes a special knack. And it would be a very, very tough cut.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb?
To expand on some of the other responses, you're a student athlete, so student first. And so, I believe that academics should come first. However, I'm gonna expand a little more on the referendum side of things. So, the failed referendum last November, to my opinion, yes, budgets in every household are tight, they're getting tighter, it's a real, real thing. In my opinion, the failed referendum in November reflects more of a trust issue than it does a financial issue of this community supporting our schools. We've got tons of people here, we had tons of people last year, we've had people at all kinds of different events at the high school. It's not a support issue in our community. I think it's more of a trust issue that we need to begin to rebuild.
Dylan?
I mean, I think it's a little more nuanced than just cutting something fully. Like if you're saying, is it English or baseball? Obviously, it's baseball being cut, but it's, you gotta weigh all these different things. But I do think that, yeah, obviously academics come first. And I'll point to a school district of Moston, who recently failed three referendums in a row. And in February, went to a referendum, they said, if this doesn't pass, we're cutting everything. No more sports or extracurriculars, and we may have to shut the school district down. So, it could get to a drastic level like that, but clearly, sports and extracurriculars would come first.
Thank you, Dylan. Alright, question number four. And Nick, you'll be the first one on this. Okay, how does the school board build trust and bridge the community divide? Lisa, you're next.
You're not gonna read it.
They put their name here, I'm gonna take the name. No, for sure not. Oh, I'm so sorry, oh, there's no way to delete that, I hope that we're okay.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Can you read the question again, I've got...
Yes, how does the school board build trust and bridge the community divide?
By electing people that they trust. That'll do it for me.
Alright. Steve?
Well, I agree too, but I, I do think that the, the board currently needs to make an apology to the, to their constituents. For the past three years, there have been a lot of mistruths that came either through the board or they acknowledged and didn't correct them. And I think until that happens, I don't think this community's gonna stay split apart, and it's not good for the district. I mean, the school district had a net loss of a hundred kids last year. I mean, we do that for ten years, we won't have a school district anymore. So, I mean, we need to fix this. And mistakes were made, and just a good old-fashioned apology would be fine with me. But, you know, and I would accept that, and we could move on. I don't know about everybody else, but I think the community as a whole, that would go a long way to mend a lot of fractures.
Thank you, Steve. Mike?
Okay, well, I think in the last couple of months, I think that the school district has taken some great leaps in gaining some trust and really some trust back. Some of the changes that were made, I think, were very good. They were right when you said, as far as electing new board members, getting some new blood in, some new thoughts and things like that. But I think more often than not, we need, and this would include the board members, along with the administration and the teachers, we need to get out and communicate more with the public. You need to go to meetings, you need to be able to go and sit down with your neighbor and talk about it. You know, rather than hearing someone complain about the school district that we have too much of this or too much of that, or we don't have this and don't have that, ask them about it, you know? And that's the one thing that I don't think we've had enough of. But I do think we're getting there. You know, some examples of a couple of the programs that we have are very, very encouraging, at least in my thought.
Thank you. Mike? Caleb?
So, I think there's a couple of different components to this. The first one is I think we need to start, continue to be overly transparent, overly communicative from, from the district to the community. The other one, I think, is more of inter-district, the Board of Education confined, is we need more discussion in the school board meetings. If you watch a school board meeting, there's nine-zero vote, nine-zero vote, eight-one vote, nine-zero vote. And it's, it's okay to have a six-three vote, it's okay to have an eight-two vote. It's, discussion provides extra opportunities for perspectives to be shared. And I think that's what we need. And the other thing is, I attended both listening sessions, one in December and one in January. And I think those were fantastic. They were poorly attended, but they were fantastic. They were small groups, there was some questions that were scripted to kind of keep discussion going. But it was, we need more communicated, or more community involvement when it comes to those listening sessions. Because whether it's a big topic or a small topic, if you can answer your question... Because whether it's a big topic or a small topic, if you can answer your question before it gets, somebody gets behind a computer and spreads maybe misinformation, false information, or half the information, I think that's the right way to start beginning to build trust back in the community.
Thank you. Caleb? Dylan?
Yeah, I think communication outwards is important, and I do believe we've been improving on that lately. I think Mr. Monroe has made that a huge priority in the last month or so. And like Caleb said, the listening sessions, I know you people up here attended those. It was disappointing to see that not a lot of people showed up to those, to be quite honest. I think we should continue to do those regularly, at least quarterly, I think we should do those with staff as well. And just keep doing those and keep communicating and hope people show up and listen and respond.
Thank you, Dylan. Nicole?
I agree. Just like everybody else said, it's really just getting community involvement, getting to know us, getting to know the community, having the relationship with each other so that you can trust each other, coming to different meetings, being involved. But I do understand that there are some limiting factors, and you might not be able to always come to the meetings, and that's what the school board is for. The nine board members receive that direct information from the district and can pass along and discuss with community members. And even if you might not agree on the outcome, it's that open communication that will really help rebuild the connection between the community and the school district.
All right, great, thank you, Nicole. I think we're on the round. Steve, you'll be the first one to start this round. Have you met with any state legislators to discuss school funding? If yes, what did you learn?
That's easy. I have. It works, that's okay.
Yeah? Mike?
For me, I have not recently. In the past, I was deeply involved in, with some of the Assembly and Senators, and mainly through my son Brett and his involvement, both at a state and a federal level. So I'm used to talking to those type of people, but I have not done it recently. No, no. Given a chance, believe me, I would welcome it, and I'd like to have them come and sit right here, you know, and listen to what you people have to say.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb?
So yes, I have. January 24th, I believe it was, I met with Howard Markline, discussed state funding, like I said. A little bit more context to that is, I asked him about what the, you know, obviously there's a broken disconnect because 80% of the schools in Wisconsin are going to state fund, uh, state referendums. His argument is, if 10 students walk out your door, there goes $120,000, just poof, gone. And I said, you're right, it is. So if 80% of the districts in the state of Wisconsin are going to referendum, where are these students going? Because I think that's the bigger issue. If we can't determine where this count is to properly fund our schools, that's a huge issue. And to say that you have $4 billion surplus and you're going to increase it, you need to do it. You can't give out, I agree with him when he says that you can't give out one big check and then kind of say, there you go, you have to increase over time, and I think that's a huge thing. Overall productive meeting, we did see not on the same page at all.
Thank you, Caleb. Dylan?
Yeah, Mad One Representative Novak was our Assembly member, I had some conversation with him. He does say he supports special education funding, it's hard to see the evidence of that. I do have regular conversations with our new representative, Jacobson. She is kind of just sitting back and listening to me about what's going on here, since she's new to our area as our representative, but she's been very receptive to increased school funding and especially special education funding. Senator Markline, I have tried to talk to him, and he has never responded. I'll be a little more blunt than Caleb, I think he doesn't care.
All right, thank you, Dylan. Nicole?
No.
Thank you, Nicole. Nick?
I have not, and I don't know, there's a sign out at the Monroe Ethanol Plant that they put up after they were trying to get Congress or local government to help them out. Lobbying politicians is like trying to wheel a wheelbarrow full of frogs across the parking lot. Unless, unless we have an out-of-school day and we show up as a community and ask to sit down in their offices with them, they're going to keep ignoring us. And when I was running at the last election, the guy who does ripology, and he was running for school board at the same time, and I said, hey, if I win, would you like to join me in making a trip to Madison and sitting in some offices for a while and seeing what they had to say? He goes, absolutely, that's amazing. And unfortunately, I did not win, but I said, you know, if you show up once a month at their, at their office in their territory, they start to like, oh shit, these people care. So that's, you know, that's the only way you're going to get elected official to pay attention is by showing up.
Thank you, Nick. So we're back to the beginning. All right, Mike, you're up first. What you've been waiting for. Okay. Hang on a second. Oh, no, it's just, it's just, it's okay. Very few district residents attend Board of Education meetings. In the past, when community members ask questions to Board of Education, no answers are ever given. What, if anything, would you do to change this?
I would absolutely agree with whoever made the comment that not many people are showing up. If you were to take and watch the copy or the recording of the school boards on YouTube, which I think a lot of people are doing, from my last look when reviewing the last one, I think there were 140 people that had viewed it. Now, it might have been the same person 50 times, I don't know. But the idea is that I think some of the communication is there, but I, we absolutely need to push people to come. Now, why they aren't coming, I'm not sure. I mean, I certainly hear enough complaints, if I go downtown for coffee or wherever you are, you always hear that. But when I ask them, okay, what would you do, or why don't you come to the meeting, or why don't you throw your hat in the ring to run? All of a sudden, the neck kind of goes down, and they don't seem to say anymore. So I think we need to push people more to start attending, to start asking questions on some of those.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb?
I understand that the district can't answer a ton of questions and have a conversational type stuff at school board meetings. That's just the way that the parliamentary procedure is set up. However, I will pivot back towards the listening sessions. Again, fantastic, great discussions. I went both times, the first discussion, from the first meeting to the second, one at the second meeting, very different discussions, both equally important. I would like, I have proposed to a lot of administrators when I was touring the buildings that I would like to see those listening sessions, since our school is on trimester schedules, have those twice every trimester. Have it in the middle of a weekday night like this, and also have it on a Saturday morning or something along that to accommodate as many schedules as possible. Whether it's a big question, a little question, I think we can never be as too communicative. Thank you.
Caleb? Dylan?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Caleb said, I think listening sessions need to happen because of the fact that people don't come to the regular meetings. For whatever reason that may be, I'm not sure, but we need to give every opportunity for people to reach out and participate as much as they can or want to.
Thank you, Dylan. Nicole?
I agree, right along the same lines, that time during meetings is for public comment, it's not for conversation, so you're not given the time to directly answer any questions that are asked. Keeping those community, such, community listening sessions is good, but also remember that the school board has email addresses. You can email them, call them, find them, you know, out on the street, ask them questions, they'll get you answers and communicate back with you.
All right, thank you, Nicole. And Nick?
There's a question again.
Very few district residents attend Board of Education meetings.
Thank you. It's been that way for years. It's not just this community, it's every community. People don't care unless it's their wallets is being affected, because that's why you elect someone to represent you so that you can go home, feed the kids, bathe the kids, do your stuff, get done with the day. They expect you to have their best interests in heart. I'd love to see more community involvement, and I encourage it. When somebody asks you a question, you know, during the open session or during, there's nothing saying that you can't respond later, but, you know, we acknowledge all your questions, we'll respond later. You know, it's a simple, simple solution to a problem, you know? We'll get back to you. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find it out and get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Steve?
Well, I don't know if any of you remember, but do you remember about three years ago when there was a fair amount of public comment at school board meetings?
Oh, yeah.
And people did ask questions, and the school district posted it the following day or a day later, the answers to those questions? But they don't do that anymore. And I, I don't know why, but they quit doing that. I mean, we do need to have more community involvement in, to get input from the community. And when Fig was here, I was thrown on his side. He would ask me if I would be on a committee like that, you know? But nothing ever happened. I mean, it was just, it just went away. So I agree. I mean, people, it's, people can go to the, it would be nice if you could go to the school board meeting, ask a question, get an answer, and I'd get, you can't do that. I mean, they'd be there for six hours every night. So I understand that, but...
All right, thank you, Steve. And we're back to the beginning, right? No? Yes? Okay. All right, so Caleb starts this one. Caleb Aaron's. One, why do you feel, but again, everybody gets the opportunity to talk, but incidentally, it starts with the one that's dressed in. Okay, why do you feel evidence-based grading is better than point grading? And two, in your flyer, you state it is critical to provide equity to students. Shouldn't equal be the better word? Do we just do one of these two questions and I put it back in the bowl, or do we do both? They're different. Just do both on this one? Okay. Okay. And like generally, one question per card, but I appreciate it. Did you get both of those?
Yeah, just me.
Okay.
So I think evidence-based grading is a kind, is a thing of the future. Monroe is modeling their evidence-based grading off of a school in Illinois that's one of the top three or five schools in the state of Illinois. Monroeb is modeling their evidence-based grading, it's going to be implemented next year, kind of after Monroe's. Evidence-based grading teaches a lot of life skills that are associated with that subject. So say you can learn about a circumference of a sphere, that's great, but the bigger thing is there is learning about how to break down, how to problem solve, and how to draw conclusions and analyze data. So like, those are a lot of big things that go with evidence-based grading. By doing that, we're developing life skills while learning, and I think it allows for students of all levels, underachievers, overachievers, to kind of still continue with their same pace while mastering that craft. The second one is about equa, equity? No, I meant equity because every student is different, every student requires different resources, whether it's a tier-three student versus a tier-one student, they require different things from that student district. We have a classroom over at Abe, it's got 28 students in it, it's a fifth-grade class. They, those, some of those students require more hands-on potentially because of a bigger class, different learning practices compared to a student, maybe a class of 17.
Thank you. And Dylan?
I think Caleb answered his question very well. Evidence-based grading, I think, is, it is what it says. You need to provide evidence that you are learning what you say you're learning rather than filling out a worksheet. Like, I recently read there was a student suing their high school because they can't read, even though they graduated, because of his text-to-speech to do all of their assignments. I would say evidence-based grading probably would have caught that. Equity versus equality? Yeah, if you give every student the exact same treatment, it's not going to work out for everybody. You need to adjust your teaching style and everything else to each individual student.
Thank you, Dylan. Nicole?
Evidence-based grading is newish to the school district, and there's definitely been some bumps along the way. I have my kids doing a couple of classes that have the evidence-based grading, and I wasn't super clear on it either, so I did get more information on it. And I find it very useful, and it seems to be a great way to go. It just is more real life. It's like when you're at work and you get your annual review, and it's based on, you know, are you doing a good job? Are you doing an excellent job? Or could you use some, some help getting towards where you need to go? That's how the evidence-based grading is. And to me, it just seems to make sense because it's a real-world application. We just all kind of need to rework our thinking and kind of remember that we're not a number, we don't have to be a perfect GPA. We want to know the material and be able to use it.
All right, thank you, Nicole. Nick?
It sounds a lot like evidence-based grading is a, is a participation trophy for those that, you know, don't know how to do math. There's a, you know, are you grading them on an artistic approach to how they solve the problem, or did they get the answers right? If the kids can't get the answers right, then obviously they're not being taught right. How does that work? You know, I've got a son that's getting a D in one of his classes, and I'm like, really? You just said that he was doing really well. What, what happened? So that's something that I got to look at, but honestly, I think it's, you know, the latest in greatest, it's like common core math. It's something that, you know, let's twist it around. If it pans out, maybe it'll work, but I don't think I'm a fan.
Thank you. Steve?
To be quite honest, I'm not that up on either the evidence-based grading. I've heard some good points about it, but I can't really give a good opinion in one way or another right now.
And Mike?
Okay, I'm somewhat aware of it, maybe almost enough to be dangerous, but I do know that, you know, they have it here in Monroe, or starting with it. Mr. Parity and the curriculum team have been hard at work at this for quite a while, trying to get things and using other school districts, as was said. I do know that it is used throughout other school districts out throughout the state, down into Illinois and things like that. The thing that I hear about it or that I see about it is that in order to move on or to get the level of grade, you need to know the subject that you're studying. Bottom line, you need to know that. There is no more skating through because your smile is really nice, or that you're a good athlete, or because you can sing real well. You need to know, and you need to prove that you know that. And unfortunately, there's a lot of people that are against it because of that. But to me, if you're going to study a subject and learn a subject, you need to be able to prove that you know it.
All right, next question. And Dylan will start this one. Okay, our community has been divided by misinformation from administration and Board of Education. If elected, how will you bring back trust and unification to our district?
I would disagree with the question. I don't believe that there has been misinformation by the Board of Education. That's what's stated. But moving on to communication, like Ben said before, these listening sessions that we have, I think they were really beneficial, people learned, they were working to the school district and what's going on. They were more finance-related for the most part because they were referendum topics, but I think those can be expanded to everything and anything that is going on in the school district, including Board of Education and anything from curriculum to finances.
Thank you, Dylan. Nicole?
I believe it's just keeping those lines of communication open. I mentioned it before, that the school, the school board serves the community and is that connection point between the district and the people. And we're, we're here, and the board is here, to listen to you, take your questions and your concerns to the district, get answers and report back. If you're not able to make meetings or make listening sessions, reach out to the board. That's, that's truly what they're here for.
Thanks, Nicole. Nick?
I'd really like to see the minutes from some of the closed doors meetings. Honestly, I, I believe that there's a lot of conversations that were had behind closed doors that would, but a lot of people's, you know, if that information was made public, people would understand what had happened and why. I disagree with Dylan. I disagree with Dylan that, you know, miscommunication was, uh, or, uh, I don't know what the word was.
Misinformation.
Misinformation was used. I had lots of questions, like, uh, why we picked one particular real estate agent over a bunch of other real estate agents to help us find the property for the school. Lots of those kind of questions, you know, were asked and never answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Could you read the question again?
Sure can. Our community has been divided by misinformation from admin and BOE. If elected, how will you bring back trust and unification to our district?
Well, unfortunately, I, my personal feeling is, I, I believe the past superintendent was brought here for one reason, and is to build a new high school. And I believe that's why the board hired him. And he got it done. He got it to go through. I believe, also believe, he kind of steered the board and told them what to do and how to get it done. I, I'm not gonna throw all this back on the school, current school board. And he's gone. And I don't have the, the, the perfect solution, but like I said before, I think an apology from the board to the community would go a long way in resolving all of these issues.
All right, thank you, Steve. And Mike?
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, I think communication on a lot of this is definitely going to help improve the situation. Uh, I think some of the moves that the board has made in the last few months has definitely headed us, steered us in the right direction. I think the trust is building, the people are starting to see that. With the new election, hopefully, hopefully if I'm one of them, um, you know, that my door will always be open. You know, you pick up a flyer, it has my email, my phone number. If I don't answer, just hang on, I'll call you back. But, um, you know, I think you need to work with the people themselves. You have to build a trust with the people. And it's gonna take a little bit of time, I think, to get back to the level of where we think we should be. But I think we're headed in the right direction. You know, um, it's really about all I can say is, the communication, I think, is gonna be critical, very, very critical. And not only by the school board, but by the admins, I think by the teachers, all the way down to, I mean, everybody that is associated with the school has to be communicating with people in the public.
All right, thank you, Mike. Caleb?
Uh, so, I've said multiple times, I think those listening sessions were great, we need to keep expanding on those, no matter what the topic. If there's a hot item, if there's not, they need to continue to keep happening. Another couple, another thing I'd like to expand on is the survey that we sent out back in, in November to December. Uh, I have very mixed feelings on that survey. I don't think that survey today, after our, a change of direction in January, I don't think those results on that survey are as accurate as what they, uh, maybe are perceived. Another thing with those surveys is, I am a strong believer that the comment section of that survey is five times more valuable than what the data of the survey actually says. Because the comments are gonna tell you what you need to fix and how you need to fix it. And it, I think our school board is becoming more communicative, but I think we need to have, we can still continue to keep building on that. Joe Monroe does a great job of sending out emails every Friday on what has happened throughout the week, uh, what is happening next week, and I think those are phenomenal for just the staff and the support staff to feel comfortable and to feel like they're involved and included. And so I think we just need to keep going on that stuff.
All right, thank you, Caleb. Next question, Nicole, you're first on this one. How do you believe that the school district of Monroe can best support student mental health and social emotional well-being?
All right. So I mentioned before that I feel that each student needs to be valued, inspired, and supported. And we need to do that by respecting each student's individuality, allowing them the opportunity to learn in their primary language and primary style, and recognizing that those children have unique sets of skills, which goes along with the equity mentioned before. If a student needs extra help to raise them up to this point, and another student needs even more, you just need to give them what they need so that they're, um, finishing at the same endpoint. It's really just about understanding that each student is a different individual and working with them to make sure that they're given what they need to excel.
Thank you, Nicole. Nick?
I think that's why a lot of students are leaving Monroe, is because of their mental health and the bullying that occurs at all levels in the school. The middle school in Monroe is ripe with it. If it's the age group or the atmosphere, whatever it is, I've sat on a bullying committee at the middle school for years. And we talked a lot about how to fix it, and I, honestly, I don't think it got any better before my son left the middle school. But I think getting to the root of that problem and, you know, you can talk a lot about doing something, you can wear your orange shirt on a Wednesday, but then to turn it around and find out that you were trashed publicly in a meeting, you know, by a principal that, you know, thought that nobody else was paying attention in the school district lets it, lets it happen. And then lets them go on to, to do their thing. That's not drawing the line in the saying, that's just sweeping it underneath the rug.
And thank you, Nick. Steve?
Um, I, I get the, the mental health of the kids today is a huge issue. I think social media has a huge part in this. I wouldn't be opposed to banning any cell phones from all the schools, at least eight hours a day that they don't have it in their hand. I mean, it's gotten to the point, it's, it's scary. I'm glad they don't have young kids right now. But I mean, we need to do everything we can to support the kids. There is a lot of bullying going on. I think most of it's on social, via social media. And, you know, when those kids are called out on those things, we need to take action on them, and there needs to be some discipline, and we need to follow through with it. I mean, probably the worst case would expel them. I mean, because it's not gonna get any better. And when the bully wins, the school loses.
All right, thank you, Steve. Mike?
Okay, I think one of the first things we need to look at is the financing of it. You take that entire program, I mean, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous on the money that we get reimbursed from the state and federal governments. And we are supposed to put together and yet follow the guidelines that they set, but where's the money? Now again, it's that age-old thing, they don't wanna give it to us right now, they'll do it over time. So in the meantime, you know, we're in the process here trying to, you know, develop different programs and things like that. But I think it has to take a top priority. You know, we're talking teachers and et cetera. A lot of times, the aides that we have at the school are critical to a lot of these kids, you know, and people just don't realize that. You know, we have some excellent people out there that have degrees and yet working in an aide capacity simply because of, that's what they want to do. And I think we need to look at a lot of that and try and figure out a way that we can use extra people doing those types of things.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb?
Uh, so on my school tours, a couple of things that really kind of stood out to me. Uh, my first tour was at Parkside Elementary School. And Parkside Elementary School pertaining to student learning and that sort is, uh, Parkside has a exercise class that they start their, uh, early, in, early hours before school starts. And I asked what the thought process behind it was and why they do that. And I believe the middle school does it too. And it's three days a week, students come earlier in the morning because they've noticed that when kids had, start their day with exercise, they are more likely to absorb information and their, their whole day just seems to go off to a better start, and they absorb a lot more. So I think that's really critical, and I think that's really helping with students just starting their day outright. The other thing is, when it comes to, uh, other groups, clubs and activities and extracurriculars, they may seem like, uh, 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 extra money that's going out the door, they may seem like that, but it makes kids feel like they're involved and they're a part of something. Um, there was my, one of my biggest surprises was at middle school. They have a club called Dun, I think it was like Dungeons and Dragons or something. And that is the biggest club I was told in the entire middle school. I don't know anything about Dungeons and Dragons, but they said after school, the room is filled with kids, and every kid, all these kids love it. And as long as you can get a leader for it, I think that's fantastic.
Thank you, Caleb. And Dylan?
Um, I think this topic is something that Monroe has excelled at and is a leader in the state. I believe, um, Joe Monroe said that we were the first, or one of the first with our school-based mental health, where we assisted students in getting placed with local psychologists for whatever the support they needed, we would help organize that for them. And, uh, we continued innovating and doing more things. We now have a service where students' parents, staff can, uh, visit, uh, tell a doctor with that. And I think we just need to keep on being a leader and bring in fresh ideas on that topic. It's a passion of our interim superintendent, so I believe that we, we will continue to do that.
All right, thank you, Dylan. Are there any more questions that, that you'd like added to the goal? Anybody else have one here? Can hold it up? So, no? All right, next question. And this is Nick Baker. How and where do you show up for Monroe teachers and students?
Ooh, this is a good one. I kinda answered this one at the last candidate forum. You won't see me show up because, at things, because I don't wave my banner, I don't get on Facebook and brag. I'll do things without anybody knowing about it. I'll donate money, I'll buy something, you'll never hear me brag. I'll, you know, anybody who does something good and then stands there and takes them picture is just there for hoopla and positive reinforcement, and I, you'll never see me do it. But if a teacher ever has a problem, they can always reach out to me. I've had lots of conversations with teachers in the grocery stores about things, and I try and ask the questions I can without, you know, revealing where I got the information from. Because a lot of teachers are scared, they don't wanna be singled out, just like any other job. They, they don't wanna be pressured and pressured out, you know? But they've got, there's a lot of questions out there, a lot of concerns. But, uh, you'll never see me be a braggadocious posting things, you know, looking for recognition.
All right, thank you, Nick. Steve?
Yeah, I can, it, it irritates what Nick just said. I mean, if I were to get on the board, uh, any, I'd make it very well-known to all the staff in the district that, you know, they can call me anytime they want if they have a problem with something. I'd, I'd be, I'd like to really push for more, for the Monroe schools to become what they used to be, where all the kids in the county wanted to come. When I was in high school, all the kids in Green County wanted to come to Monroe schools. And I, I really wanna get back to that point. Because I think, I really do think there's a lot of positive things going on in the district. You know, we always hear about all the bad things, but, um, the positive things really need to be pushed out there. And I think, especially in the high school right now with everything that's going on in the trades, I mean, that's, that's really enlightening. And it, I think it's great that, that the school district is opening it up to area schools.
Thank you, Steve. Mike?
Well, as I mentioned in, uh, the start of my presentation, I've been involved with the schools on a volunteer basis, doing several things. You know, from anywhere, from, uh, the Booster Club involvements and different things like that, a lot of youth coaching and et cetera. I feel that was critical that you get in with the kids, and a lot of those kids are very close to our family and to me today. We attend as many events as what we possibly can when we're around. You know, last night, or yesterday afternoon, we were at the musical at the high school. If anybody didn't see that, you missed one heck of a show. I mean, it was, by far, the best high school presentation I've ever seen. Hopefully, they can put that online on YouTube and your people can see it. It is, it's magical. It really is. But helping to build those types of sets, getting involved with the students, with the key clubs, the younger Kiwanas, the junior optimists and different things like that, getting out on their workdays, out at Cada Springs, they come out and they help. Those are the kind of things that I'm involved in, and I definitely feel you build a better repertoire with the students from doing that.
All right, thank you. And Caleb?
Uh, so as I said before, I was in every single building. I met with every principal, I met with most of the vice principals. I would think in the elementary schools, I think I may have went into every single classroom and watched learning. I've talked this week, I spent several hours on the phone talking to teachers and those buildings. And, and during my school visits, I asked the same four questions to every principal and most of the vice principals. What are wins in your building? What are challenges in your building? What makes your building different? And what can the school, what can the Board of Education do to help bring the community back together? And I thought those were all, I thought they were good questions. Supporting teachers, so being a part of the Green County B Producers, we do a lot of other activities of supporting youth in the community and in Green County. But one thing that I was very adamant on is, we're building a cart for the, that's gonna be at the Green County Fair. And we can have a local weld shop build it, I'm sure they'd do fantastic. But we elected and we voted to have the Monroe High School welding department build the cart because if we're not building a rocket ship, they can build a cart, they can learn from it, we can make a donation to the school, and everybody wins.
Thank you. Dylan?
Obviously, serving on the board right now is, is one thing I do, but advocating with our local officials for public education is another, another big thing I do. And then obviously trying to get to as many performances, athletic activities. Um, I think Mike mentioned the launch presentations are upcoming very shortly. I believe I've, I've attended every single one of those, and those have all been awesome. I toured the house that they remodeled last year, and that was really impressive, and I'm looking forward to seeing the finished product of this, this next one and touring that as well.
Thank you, Dylan. Nicole?
Um, I mentioned earlier, I love being involved with the school district and the community. I serve on the Booster Club, I'm in charge of the concession stand, which helps fund the Booster Club, um, helping on the post-prom committee. While my kids were in middle school, I helped with Washington DC fundraising. I've also assisted on Say Yes campaigns. Through all those different, um, different things that I've helped with, I've met a lot of parents, students, um, teachers and staff, and I feel that I've got a good relationship with them and that they would feel welcome, um, in coming to me with any of their needs. I just feel that that's the best way to have a relationship, is to get out there, meet people, work with them.
All right. Thank you, Nicole, and we're back to the question. What idea, this is Steve, this is for you first. What ideas do you have for ensuring that the school district of Monroe is a safe, inclusive place for our students, including students who are undocumented immigrants or part of the LGBTQ plus community?
Well, I think our schools need to be open for everyone. And we need to do everything we can do to keep the kids safe while they're at school. I mean, with everything that's going on in the world right now, I mean, I don't know if the board has any recommendations or a policy set up, you know? If ICE were to come on property, would they be allowed in the school? I don't know. I don't think they should go inside the school building, I really don't. They have enough opportunities outside school. But, I don't know, it's, it's a bad world we're living in right now, and it's, there's a lot of, a lot of people have a lot of questions. I just, we need to try to do everything we can do on our part, just to get them safe while they're at school.
All right, thank you, Steve. And Mike?
I know for a fact that the school district does have policies for ICE. If they were to come to the schools, you know, there is a policy and everything set up on how they will respond. Uh, there are policies for the transgender, addressing those situations, policies on a lot of different things. And if, you know, if you really have an interest in it, what I would encourage you to do is to talk to Mr. Monroe, or now to Mrs. Timmerman, who's going to be temporarily taking over that job. They can explain to you exactly what those policies are and going over it. For me to know them in detail, believe me, I, I don't, I kind of know a general consensus of it. But, um, they are on top of it, especially with the ICE and, and those kind of things, they have worked diligently on that over the last few months. And especially over the last three to four weeks. And, um, as a board member, what I would wanna do is to make sure that we're reviewing those on a regular basis with the administration so that they can carry them up properly.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb?
So again, I don't, I don't know a ton about the policies, what, uh, how we would handle ICE as a district or as a community. I will say that I do know that the Hispanic population, uh, students in our schools, attendance has taken a dip since this has become more of a hot item topic. Uh, and, and that's not good for anybody. That's not good for teachers, that's not good for, uh, support staff, that's not good for the students. Because now those students are missing out on learning hours, and it's gonna take them longer to catch up. Regarding safety, uh, I, every building that I, every school building that I went to or even area districts you have to buzz into, I think that's, that that's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with pushing the button and say, hey, I have a meeting with so-and-so, and they unlock the door and I walk in. I think that's great. I think that's great. I think Broadhead has kind of run into a few issues with the safety and that's one of the reasons why they passed a referendum is because you can't see the front doors from their office. And, uh, we're fortunate, where I think most of ours are pretty either locked down or you can't see the doors. So I think safety, uh, we're doing the best we can. With the new high schools, we made, mostly made of glass. It may not be bulletproof glass, bulletproof glass is extremely expensive, but most banks aren't even made of bulletproof glass. There's different stages of glass that you can do that is equally safe, just with a less, uh, fraction of the cost.
Thank you Caleb, Dylan?
Um, yeah, in regards to, um, our Hispanic population, I actually had a lot of people reach out to me in December and January. I shared a lot of information with Mr. Monroe, we had some good back and forth. So there is a, a robust policy that is obviously not publicly shared, what, what happened if that situation were to occur. So, so that is on top of mind. And like Caleb said, we've had some attendance issues, which is just a terrible thing to happen. People are afraid to come to school. And we need to do what we can to say it's, it's not a danger for them to come to school because they're, they're living their educational experience. For safety, um, like in the new high school, there's gonna be top of the line safety protocols. With the different wings of classrooms, those can all be locked down individually if something were to occur. And, uh, with secure entrance, where we have the office right there, before you can even get into the rest of the building after they buzz you in is, is pretty key as well.
Thank you Dylan, and Nicole?
Yeah, uh, just kind of adding on to what Caleb and Dylan said. Safety is the most important, um, for our students. They need to feel that they can come to school to focus and learn, not have to worry about, um, somebody coming and harming them, taking them, um, you know, there's just so many different, um, concerns right now. But I feel that if we provide that safe place, um, which needs to be our, one of our top priorities, I think that that will help the kids continue to, to, um, focus on their learning. And that also is obviously a top priority.
Thank you, Nick?
All right, I'm gonna reverse the order which I answered. Schools are one of the safest places that there are. We always hear about all the bad things that happen in the school. My job in the military was to make bad things happen in very secure places. There's no way to prevent a hundred percent of the problems that are out there. We can put things in place to stop it, but having a robust reaction plan, working with the Monroe PD and the Green County responders and the EMS, having teachers trained on stop the bleed, all these things are very important. And that stuff should never be public knowledge of a reaction to that. But on the same hand, an ICE, an ICE policy should be public notice so that those kids in the community know, know that they're safe. And personally, I think I'd be willing to stand in front of a school and get handcuffed and stuffed into a car to protect any of the kids in that building. There's, there's no reason for, uh, that type of situation to happen. And to go to the LGBTQ quick, as long as you're not causing a disturbance, I don't care what you call yourself, what you want to do. If you're in there to learn, more power to you.
All right, thank you. Next question, Mike, you'll go first. In today's educational environment, do you believe it is more important to offer classes in real-world trades or specialized advanced courses?
I think we have to have a combination of both on that because you have such a diverse group of students. Uh, you have a lot of students that are going directly to work or going to a tech school to learn trades. And I think we have a classic example. In fact, I know in talking with some superintendents in the Fox Valley, they take a look at this down here and they start to drool with the launch program. Uh, and seriously, they really do. Now, on the other end, you also have some people or some of the students that are in school that are absolute geniuses and we can't hold them back either. We have to make sure that we have classes on both ends. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act, it really is. But I think we really have to, uh, really recognize all of that and, you know, provide the education on both ends.
Thank you Mike, Caleb?
Uh, I would agree, I think it needs to be a balance, I think there needs to be, you have, you have to have both. Kind of the classes geared towards, there's a launch, the soar program, the clear exploration, those are great, those are wonderful. I, I wish I could have taken those in high school. I think the indirect part benefit of those is maybe a student takes, goes and drops shadows a, a business in town and realizes, hey, this is what I wanted to do, but after doing that, this is not what I expected to be, and I don't want to do this at all. And if we can save that time from them exploring that, whether they get in the workforce or in, during the college setting, and they can make that decision in high school, we're saving them time, we're saving them money because they're not changing, uh, uh, courses or they're not changing occupations, uh, after they've already put all the time in. So I, I, I think we need a balancing act of both. I think both programs are fantastic. It doesn't matter if you're going to be a doctor, a lawyer, or if you're gonna go be a plumber, a, putting in flooring, a carpenter, both equally important and both deserve the same kind of paths.
Thank you Caleb, Dylan?
Yeah, I agree, we need to make sure we offer a diverse curriculum so everyone can take a course that they're interested in. We've been focusing a lot on, on launch in the last few years. Yeah, a lot of that stuff wasn't available when I was in school either. They, I think the capstone program had just ended right before I got in high school, so I didn't have a chance to do that. That would have been something I've been very interested in. Uh, but we do need to lose, do not lose sight of the advanced courses as well. I don't think we probably promote those as much as the launch programs since that's so new and exciting, but those, those need to exist as well for, for students that are interested in it.
Thank you Dylan, Nicole?
I did note earlier, um, that one of my top three funding priorities would be exceptional education, which has both sides of the coin. The students require extra support and the students capable of taking on extra challenges. The opportunities for the various types of learning, such as classroom work experience, technical and life skills, that all, it's, you know, encompassed in that launch program. And there's so many different ways that it's not just, um, the trades. They, you know, they've also got the CNA programs now, um, they're expanding it to where you can get your certifications before you're even done with school. Moving you further along in the secondary education world and saving, saving your money as well.
Thank you Nicole, Nick?
When I moved to Monroe in ninety-six, I, I really enjoyed my time in the metal shop. And I had enough credits to graduate as a junior for the most part, but I spent my senior year in the woodshop and the metal lab. And I've always, I've said this at the last candidate forum and other listening sessions too, Monroe needs a two-tiered, two-path system. A path for the kids that want to explore the trades and go into that stuff. And kids that want to go to AP Biology, you know. When I was in high school, I did AP Biology, AP History. And I get a lot of information out of those classes and a lot out of the woodshop and the metal time I did. I was able to work with the special ed's kids in woodshop. And the knowledge that I learned just from learning how to, to work with those kids when I was a kid myself and helped them do things was impressive. And we got rid of those programs. Why did we get rid of them back in the early two thousands? Because the district decided that we needed to focus on college. That was our superintendent that did that. And now we're clawing it back and it's appropriate, thank you.
Thank you Nick, Steve?
I agree, we need an equal balance and for years, it hasn't been that way. I think the district as a whole is doing a really good job right now. They're offering college classes to the high, some of the high school kids that want to take them. And they, and the, expanding the trades part is really, I'm really excited about that because, I mean, when I went to school, I mean, they basically steered you to a four-year college. You get a degree or you're not gonna mount to anything. And that's not for all kids. I mean, all kids don't need a four-year degree. You know, I saw so many kids, they went to college for four or five years, or if they went that long, and dropped a bowl load of money and basically got the college experience and they never even did a job that they went to school for. So I mean, I think the, the district here is doing a really good job of doing a balancing act right now. And I'd like to see that, just the way they're going.
Thank you Steve. And we're back to the beginning. No, yes. I don't know, I've got a long, we are, okay Caleb, you're first. Okay. With the decreasing of school funds, how do you feel we should continue to keep our mental health support as a high priority?
So like I said before, I think having, offering a wide range of activities, extravehicular programs and activities for these students to participate in, helps them feel a, a worth and helps them feel included, helps them be, be a part of something. Whether it's being part of a state championship football team or being a part of the Dungeons and Dragons club at the middle school. I think it's fantastic and I think it, due to the decrease in state funding, if that becomes more and more of a hurdle, we need to still lean on those programs to help those kids feel included, help those kids feel like they're involved and they're, they're part of our community.
Thank you Caleb, Dylan?
Yeah, we need to continue our mental health programs, um, because if students are struggling with their mental health, they're not gonna perform well academically. And we kind of rated some budget, budget issues. We pivoted to a, to the telehealth, uh, mental health service and I think that has, has worked pretty well. But if we continue to have budget issues, um, we'll have to continue to innovate and be creative with different, different ideas.
Thank you Dylan, Nicole?
Mental health, obviously a huge priority. I feel that the school district has put a lot of, um, different programs in place. I know that they partner with, um, a few of the local, um, counseling, um, offices and they provide services in the schools versus having to have the kids schedule outside of classroom time. That partnership seems to be going very well. It's, if the funding is lost, it's definitely gonna be something that's gonna be, something that needs to be fought for. And unfortunately, it's probably one of the more expensive things on the plate as well.
Thank you Nicole, Nick?
Most students are in school about eight hours a day. They spend a lot of time at home where the situation at home is a lot worse than it is at school. It's a, mental health is a community problem. It's, it's one of the things, my wife who's a nurse, you know, is constantly talking about, mental health is not just a school thing. Yes, the school district needs to do everything they can and I'm sure that they will continue to do so, but the community needs to start, you know, helping those kids out and each other. You know, I struggle with depression. I've been diagnosed with depression for fourteen years. It's not easy. But every day, you put on your boots, you do what you gotta do. There's other people that, in this room, I'm sure that have their own doubts about day-to-day. Don't be, you're not alone. We're all in this together. And it's, it's hard sometimes, but all it takes is to reach out to somebody and let them know you need help. The kids need to know that they can do that.
Thank you Nick, Steve?
I think, I think the mental health of the kids today is more important than it's ever been before. I'll tell you a little story, when I was in high school and I had a, I had a teacher that, it was his last year, he was gonna retire and I would guess out of the entire school year, we spent half of the days just talking. And you know what? That guy taught me more in that year about life than any subject he was teaching. You know, I mean, we just talked about everything, you know? And I would hope and I would encourage teachers, especially like at the high school level, to get tight with their kids, I mean, and be their friend. I mean, I respected that guy, I mean, he was a perfectionist and he expected a hundred percent from everybody all the time. But you know what? There was days we did nothing in school, but the whole class just talked, so it's important.
Steve, Mike?
Okay, well first I think we need to continue, uh, some of the programs that we have, or virtually all of the programs, and even expand them if possible. Again, the funding is something that needs to be worked on. We need to be innovative on how we are presenting some of that material and getting to the kids. I think we know, we need to work closer with the families, et cetera. Uh, the other thing I think we should start doing, if we aren't already, and I don't know, Dylan may know more about that, but, uh, working with a lot of the other districts around the state. Finding out what are they doing? I mean, every, every single school in the state is facing the same situation that we are. And how are they handling those types of things? You know, and really sit down, have some meetings with them and just find out, are there better ways that we can be doing some of the things that we are doing?
All right, we're gonna get to two more questions. I think exactly. Okay, so next up is Dylan. Have you reviewed the school district budget? If you have, is there any area you feel stands out and why?
Uh, yeah, very, very, yeah. As far as any standout items, um, I mean, it's just having people get the realization that most of the school district budget goes to staff. So there's not, there's not a lot out there to slash out of the budget other than people's jobs or programs at this point. And I know administration is a big topic about the budget and even over, and Joe had a, a great presentation a few meetings ago showing our comparables to other districts. I think that was a great thing to do for transparency to see where we compare with similar districts that, that's not a huge outlier in our budget for any staff area. And we should continue to do things like that.
Thank you Dylan, Nicole?
I have looked it over. I don't have as great of a depth of understanding as Dylan does. But if I would be elected to the board, obviously, that would be things that I would ask questions about and make sure that I was understanding, um, to the fullest so that the appropriate decisions and possible cuts would be made appropriately.
Thank you Nicole, Nick?
I have not, and that'll do it for me.
All right, Steve?
I have not looked at it either, but I do have some questions if I were to get on the board that I would like some answers to.
Okay, thank you Steve, Mike?
I haven't gone over it in detail. I have talked to some of the administrators, uh, about some of the different areas and, uh, things like that, some of the concerns that I've heard from the community. One of the big things that I don't think people understand is the voucher system and how much we have to pay. As an example, four years ago, Monroe School District paid zero dollars in vouchers. Zero dollars. Three years ago, we paid forty-three thousand dollars. Two years ago, we paid ninety-nine thousand dollars. This year, we paid one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars to private school vouchers. Now, I have nothing against private schools, don't get me wrong there. But I think if we're going to start looking at books and, and things like that, we need to address certain things like that. I mean, that's a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand bucks right there folks. That's a lot of cash. You know, you take a look at a, a annual budget of thirty-seven million dollars, yeah, it's kind of a drop in the bucket, but it'd be a pretty good place to start.
All right, thank you Mike, Caleb?
So I met with Ron, Mr. Ron Olson last Friday and, uh, as you can see, I had a few questions. And, uh, I, we went through, spent about an hour and a half, we went through the budget, about, almost line for line. And it's a couple of the big opening things to me were, um, when you look at the curriculum part of the budget, you see that English went down from fifty-nine thousand to twelve-hundred-and-thirty. Well, I had questions on, why, why did you see a huge difference? And the biggest takeaway from that is, it's how the, what costs, courses are being offered that year and how those expenses are being coded. You may have three different kinds of English or three different kinds of science classes, but if you don't offer those certain courses, it's kind of hard to, you can't put those expenses towards that. The, the private school voucher program, uh, was a huge eye-opener. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot we can do about that. We do not get any record of who the students are, where they went, or why they, why they transferred out. So there's not a whole lot of control there. One other thing I'd like to take a look at is the public library. Monroe is at a little bit of a disadvantage because the Monroe Public Library is a part of the Monroe School District. We are one of the only districts in the state of Wisconsin that does that. So part hundred, one-point-two million dollars of our tax levy goes to Monroe Public Library.
Thank you Caleb, and one last question. All right. Okay, what is your, this is short, so Nicole, what is your stance on limiting cell phones during school hours?
Well, the cell phones are distracting. Probably unpopular opinion with my kids and students would be that they should probably be parked to the side. be parked to the side. I'm okay with it during lunch, but yeah, definitely during that academic time, gotta put them away and focus in.
Thank you, Nicole. Nick?
I'm gonna agree with Nicole that students should have access to their phones because if there's an emergency, there's a lot of information on a phone that will be of use to that student or to anybody else, especially if that student is diabetic and they're using their phone to control their diabetic stuff. Do they need to be out during class? No, but that's where the teachers come in and they say, put your phone in the desk. Problem solved. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Nick. Steve?
I wouldn't have a problem with just banning cell phones during school hours. I'll be honest.
Thank you, Steve. Mike?
My own opinion is I think the policies that we have in place right now are working. I see absolutely no reason to change them. Right now, for those of you that don't know, at the high school, the cell phones cannot be used in the classrooms during class time or anything like that. If you are on, in between classes or at lunch, you can use them. And I have no problem with that. A lot of the kids work and need other phone calls and things like that. Middle school, you need to keep your phones in the lockers and I have no problem with that. That's where they should stay. Elementary school, if the kids are lucky enough to have a nice fancy smartphone that is smarter than me, they need to be in the child's backpack and the backpack is kept in their little cubbies, if you would. And to me, that's the way it should be. The administration has made those rules, they follow those rules and I have no problem with the ones that we have right now.
Thank you, Mike. Caleb?
I think the way the high school handles the cellphone policy is probably the way it should be. Outlawing school, uh, phones in the schools is a little bit extreme in my opinion just due to today's opportunity for emergencies. Do I think they need to be out during class time? Absolutely no, but used between classes, during lunch, you know, that kind of thing. I, I have no problem with that. I, I, as long as it's not providing a distraction, it's not being used during educational time, I think that's all right.
Thank you, Caleb. Dylan?
Yeah, I agree. The current policy is, is, is good as long as enforcement is, is done by the teaching staff. On its face value, you'd say, oh, banning cell phones, that seems like a great idea, but we obviously run into all sorts of issues of emergencies, having to contact your parents or siblings or whatever, so I, I just don't think that's very feasible in today's world.
Thank you, Dylan. Okay. So there's seven written questions that remain, but never fear, we will type all remaining questions up and send them to all of the candidates so they can choose how they wish to address them and distribute them. Thank you to all for attending tonight. It's a wonderful thing and a necessary thing to come together like this, voice to voice, face to face, neighbor by neighbor. So thank you. We're very fortunate to have so much interest in these important volunteer board positions. Let's give them a big thank you. Safe home.